Yesterday afternoon, we had left off with Bill Number 402. And Senator Frank Vlos, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, after discussing with the counsel and also with the author of the bill, I propose to make amendment to line 11. The word granted. Change that word to given, so that the sentence will read, "Initial consideration for locally-owned, locally-based businesses or services shall be given before considering and soliciting businesses or services outside of the territory of Guam." So the consideration will be given, and it doesn't become a, basically, a bureaucratic procedure. You know, it's still a process that the business itself that has qualified certificate is accountable. And we're holding that business accountable for making sure that they comply to this.
On the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I understand correctly, the amendment to change the word granted to given, well, what I just heard was that to ensure that the business who has a QC will look first at our locally-owned, locally-based businesses, right? But I, but I, what I also heard yesterday was the concern of the word granted in meaning that that's going to be already determined, that it's going to happen. And I'm thinking, maybe the word really should be, shall be considered. Because a lot of the conversation yesterday, Madam Speaker, was that what we want to ensure is that our businesses that are getting government subsidies do support local expertise, local talent. But there are times, there are times, when local doesn't have the kind of expertise that is needed or wanted to grow. And so then those people, QC's, should be able to be given that kind of support system or that opportunity to go regionally, to go off-island nationally, to bring that in. So I think that the word given still carries the same connotation as granted. And I'm wondering if the word, the verb considered really carries the intention of what we're trying to do here. I throw that out for consideration.
Consideration.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think that with regards to the concern brought up by the good Senator from Timuining, and I see her, I guess, the issue there. But if you read the context and the way it's going to be written, the way I'm going to, I'm proffering is that consideration will be given. The way that good Senator from Timuining would like to say is consideration will be considered. Whereas if consideration would be given, it's, it has to be done. Consideration to be considered, you know, then there's that, well, I've considered We want, I see the intent of the legislation. We want to make sure that, you know, that this process, again, occurs. My concern is that in this process, it doesn't become a bureaucratic roadblock. It holds that business accountable. It has to be given. Consideration has to be given, as opposed to consideration has to be considered. So therefore, I stand with my amendment.
On the amendment, is there anybody else? There being none, so hearing no objections then for the change of the word from granted to given. So ordered. So on the motion then to send Bill 402, unless Senator, oh, I've got another, Senator Munia Barnes? Do you want to go ahead and talk about? Okay. Sure. You're recognized. Okay, wait. So let's, let's finish then with Senator Vlos.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, if you're looking at the original, the way the law was originally established, it basically had read that requiring the beneficiary to establish in-house training program or make contributions to independent training or scholarship fund. Yesterday, there was a whole conversation with regards to the utilizing, utilizing the locally-based and locally-owned business and the whole push to be able to, for, for the utilization, again, of these locally-owned programs, businesses. But at the same time, there was a whole discussion and concern with regards to whether or not there is going to be, it's going to actually, if we're going to consider the financing and the finances is concerned with this thing. Let's take, for example, and break this down very simply. Locally-owned business may have the service to be provided, and may be provided at about $2,000 per service. Yet in-house training utilizing off-island people, you know, would cost this company $500. So what we've, in essence, done then is then tacked on, basically, a $1,500 cost, just to comply with this law. That said, as was original in the law, it provided to establish training programs or make contribution. In the new, the way the law's written, or the legislation is written now, it says utilize local training services as needed or establish in-house training with locally-based experts and make contributions. So whereas the initial law was do this or this, now we're saying do this or this and you have to do that. And that may be an additional burden on the company. Why don't we make it or, or, or? Instead of and, and, or? Or, 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 instead of or, or, and. This way, it, there, you know, I firmly believe, and yes, there is the, there may be a point that we're going to be able to provide all the services. Okay? And there may not be the necessity for this law. But in the meantime, I just don't want to put an undue burden. If the company is already going to have to look, and is going to already have to consider the utilization of locally-owned. But to say that now they have to consider and they have to make a contribution, whereas the initial law was, you know, establish the in-house training on your own or provide funding so that there could be an establishment of this in-house training in, you know, institutions like the University of Guam, the Guam Community College. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to, on line 10, change the word and to or. So that it reads now, requiring the beneficiary to utilize locally-based, locally-owned training services as needed or establish in-house training programs that consults with locally-based experts to ensure compliance to pertinent local rules and regulations as needed or make contributions to independent training or scholarship fund. This way, you know, if you look at all three options, all three options goes back to being able to contribute to the local economy. So again, it's line 10, the word and, to change it to or.
Okay, so the only change then will be on line 10, and that is to delete the word and and put in the word or. So it will be services as needed, that's one. Two is establish in-house, and then three would be make contribution. So it's not a combination, but it's one or the other. Okay? I'll make that clear. On the amendment, Senator Medini, and then I have Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In regards to the last speaker's amendment recommendation, there is language from a previous bill that I'm looking at to, to address the issue of making, of the cost prohibition, should this come into place. And it's a language that deals with a certain percentage, if it was to be locally, comparing the prices between locally serviced services versus off-island services. And if it's beyond that certain percentage, then of course it gives them that permission to, or grants them, or gives them that option to go off-island. And that's language that's in a previous bill that's related somewhat to the QC. So I'm asking if we could look at that language first and see if that would be able to address the issue of making it cost prohibitive to, by expecting companies who are vailing of QC's to use on-island training. So that's a language that I would like to put in first, instead of putting it as an or.
Yeah, we, we won't be able to do that until we deal first with this question. If you want a language to put in before the or, then you're going to have to have him withdraw his amendment first, then deal with yours, and then have him go back and put the or. So can we take a brief recess?
Yes, a brief recess. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, thank you for the recess. I guess the concern was cleared, so we just go ahead and call for the vote on the amendment.
So on the amendment is to keep then, is to delete the word and and add the word or. Okay, so on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, so on the motion, unless Senator Medini, oh, you, so let me, I actually have Senator Guthrie to speak, but she's not here. Oh, you did? Okay. All right, so Senator Yamashita, you're recognized. On the motion, yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 402-31, and it really is with a great sense of pride that I do so. Madam Speaker, you are well aware that 52 years ago, pioneer educator Jose Palomo had a, had a dream. And his dream was to cultivate the College of Guam, which eventually turned into the University of Guam. And I know that you were at the ceremony last Sunday, and that you celebrated with many of our island people, the people. And that 14,000 people have since graduated from the University of Guam, that is fully accredited, that started with a dream, a dream that we will become local, that we did not have to get on a plane and travel for thousands of miles to cultivate our brain and to, to put fire into our spirit. But Mr. Dr. Palomo, at that time, said that we can do this on Guam, and we can grow local, and we can be local. And I really believe that this bill strengthens that idea, that our people, when given the opportunity, can grow their expertise and can become a part of further growth and development. And earlier, I was making a comment on a proffered amendment, and I really do believe that while there are times that we are smart enough to know that expertise, knowledge, comes sometimes better from those who know more about a particular item, that we welcome the outside expertise, we welcome the off-island trainers to come and be a part of our island community. But this really does put an emphasis on the fact that we have much local expertise and that we shall support it and grow it, and we shall honor those of us in our community who can further the development of our island community. So I'm very happy to see that this bill has been proffered, and I stand in full support of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Medini, do you want to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I express my appreciation to all the previous speakers regarding improvement of this particular bill. And I will echo what many of them have shared, that this, this is an important bill that really accentuates the importance of supporting our local businesses, especially those businesses that have been here for a long while, who have a long tradition of serving our island. Some of them are public institutions. We also have many new, maybe, companies that have come to Guam and have made Guam their home, and have established their businesses on Guam for the purpose of not having, to have to go off-island. So I appreciate all the support for Bill 402-31. And I would ask if I could have a second on the bill, my previous speaker from Jampago, and if, and if, and if also, if the speakers also from Baragada and, and Timuining could also be included, that would be great. So that would be Bill 402-31. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to accept the approved bill to the voting file.
So on the amendment to add Senator Munia Barnes and Senator Frank Vlos Jr. as the second and third co-sponsors, and Senator Yamashita as the fourth. Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the motion then to send 402-31 to third reading file without objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senators. On substitute bill Number 419, we recognize, Chair recognizes the vice speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 419 as substituted by the Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs, Procurement, Governmental Operations, and Public Broadcasting to the third reading file, and I'd ask for an opportunity to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Hatch Act was initially passed in the 1930s to address major issues of corruption in the federal government, as it relates to government officials using their power to influence, I mean, to influence elections in their jurisdictions. The Guam Legislature in the 1970s saw the benefit of this, and they passed a version of the Hatch Act on Guam, which we have commonly referred to as the Mini Hatch Act. The federal Hatch Act has gone through several iterations and amendments over the last 60 or 70 years, most recently in, I think, 2002. The Mini Hatch Act on Guam, unfortunately, has not had any major amendments. There have been additions to the things that are prohibited activities, and so for a couple of years now, I've been wondering why we should preclude our government civil servants from participating in the political process, and why we would want to, in any way, impede their, their ability to participate. And I looked at the Mini Hatch Act and saw that under prohibited activities, there were 17, no, 16, 16 prohibited activities, 15, that were listed in the Act on Guam. I then compared it to the federal Hatch Act and noticed that the federal Hatch Act had fairly major amendments and were allowing for federal civil servants to participate in election processes. And so I went through, and if you'd just give me a few minutes, just, I wanted to cut back the number of political activities. And so in Section 2 on prohibited activities, I've amended the 15 sections and brought it down to just six, six things to prohibit government officials from participating in. Because I could not, one, because the federal Hatch Act allows it for their employees, and two, I could find no reason why we on Guam would not want to mirror the federal Hatch Act as it related to, to the activities that they allow their federal civil servants to engage in. And why would we preclude our employees from wanting to be members of, I mean, officers of the party and being members of the CEC of parties? Why would we prohibit our, our employees from being part of political committees for the election of any, any person running for office? Why would we prohibit our employees from being poll watchers and actually working at the polls? I mean, we were having problems in previous elections, and as government employees, we're the only ones that are really off during Election Day. And allowing them to work as precinct workers, and so, or driving voters to the polls, it just didn't make any sense. So I went through, and I've amended nine sections in here and renumbered it. So I've taken, gone from 15 prohibited activities to nine prohibited activities, I mean, to six prohibited activities. The Civil Service Commission came and testified on the bill, and they were in favor of the amendments that were being proffered. And in fact, I want to thank the Civil Service Commission for all the help that they provided us, my committee on this bill. Senator Lamorina was most helpful, and so was their attorney for the office. The one thing that Senator Lamorina brought to my attention, which I had noticed, was that in the federal Hatch Act, there is a tier. There are the regular civil servants that are allowed to participate in political activities. And then there are, then there are employees who, because of the power of their position, are still prohibited from engaging in political activities. And in my discussions with him, and in reading the Hatch Act and the intent of the Hatch Act, I fully understood the reason that certain classes of employees would still be prohibited from engaging in political activity. And so I, the substituted version that you have before you today includes a new Section B, starting on the bottom of page 2, about which employees are still going to be prohibited from engaging in campaigns. And I think if, as we go through it, you will understand why it's important that the, that these employees still, fortunately or unfortunately, their participation in the political process be restrained, because otherwise it would be misinterpreted. And the first one was the employees of the Guami Election Commission. It's already, I mean, already the commissioners themselves are representative of the two parties, but the employees of the Civil Service Commission, of the Guami Election Commission, we have to be, we, we have to have faith that they're going to do their work impartially and they're, they're, they're not involved in someone's campaign and could, could bring their involvement in someone's campaign into the office and do whatever shenanigans that could come of it, of their being involved in, in political activity outside of the office. And so the first group of civil servants that are still going to be restricted in their activities will be the employees of the Election Commission. The civil service, the same thing. And the reason for that, I think is fairly evident, that the Civil Service Commission, when they're dealing with employees and their grievances, we all know that when there's changes of administration, we go through all kinds of turmoil in the departments, and we want to be able to know that when the Civil Service Commission employees review our complaints or our concerns, that they're doing so as impartially as is humanly possible. And so their, their, their activities are also from engaging in campaigns. And I think if, as we go through it, you will understand why it's important that these employees still, fortunately or unfortunately, their participation in the political process be restrained, because otherwise it would be misinterpreted. And the first one was the employees of the Guam Election Commission. It's already, I mean, already the commissioners themselves are representative of the two parties, but the employees of the Civil Service Commission, of the Guam Election Commission, we have to be, we have to have faith that they're going to do their work impartially, and they're not involved in someone's campaign, and could bring their involvement in someone's campaign into the office and do whatever shenanigans that could come of it, of their being involved in political activity outside of the office. And so, the first group of civil servants that are still going to be restricted in their activities will be the employees of the Election Commission. The civil service, the same thing. And the reason for that, I think is fairly evident, that the Civil Service Commission, when they're dealing with employees and their grievances, we all know that when there's changes of administration, we go through all kinds of turmoil in the departments, and we want to be able to know that when the Civil Service Commission employees review our complaints or our concerns, that they're doing so as impartially as is humanly possible. And so, their activities are also going to... The third one, and this was the recommendation of the Civil Service Commission, was the Office of the Public Auditor. If anybody wants to strike that, I would have no problem with it. But the thing is, is that the members of that staff, there, we want to be able to know that when they issue their reports, that it doesn't have political, a political focus, that they're doing it purposely to be able to attack a political candidate or a group. And so you want to be able to have full faith in what they're doing. The fourth group is the Criminal Investigation Unit of the Tax Enforcement Division of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. It'd be pretty hard to not want to buy a ticket if you're being investigated and the civil servant is wearing a badge, "Support BJ Cruz" on his lapel or on his shirt, that you would want to say very nice things about me in the event that, since he was supporting me. So we wanted to make sure that the Criminal Investigation Unit of the Tax Enforcement Division of Revenue and Taxation was above reproach, and that their activities are being done because of their belief that someone owed taxes, and they're not using it to target individuals, to audit them because of political purposes. The fifth, the Guam Police Department, and the sixth is the Prosecution Division of the Office of the Attorney General. So these are the groups that the Civil Service Commission recommended, that we leave under the Hatch Act, groups that would be prohibited from any kind of political activity. The other major amendment that we made, Madam Speaker, and this was the suggestion of the Civil Service Commission, I had not realized that under the current Hatch Act, though many of us, maybe in our own recent history, may not be aware of anybody who's ever been taken before the Civil Service Commission for violation of the Hatch Act, that the way the law is currently written, and it's set forth in Pages 5 and 6 in Section 3, that investigations, if someone makes a complaint that someone has done something in violation of the Mini Hatch Act, that the current law is that it's mandated that the Civil Service Commission undertake an investigation of that report upon receipt of the information. And the Civil Service Commission has asked and suggested that we take the shall, the mandatory shall, and put a "may" in its place, and have them do an initial review, and if it's not grievous, or it's unwarranted, that they don't need to move forward with it. But the major amendment is actually on the bottom of Page 6, under the, and I'd like to make an amendment, there was a typo on this amendment, starting on Line 4, which reads, "Should the Commission determine that removal is not warranted, but that a violation of Section 50103 did occur, a penalty of not less than 30 days suspension without pay shall be imposed at the direction of the Commission." I'm going to be making an amendment to that, that should be not more than 30 days. But currently, under the law, if the Civil Service Commission finds that there's been a violation of the Hatch Act, the only remedy is termination. Regardless of the gravity of the offense, the only remedy is termination. So at the suggestion of the Civil Service Commission, and I agree with their suggestion, is that the Commission should be allowed the ability to be able to determine how grievous this offense was. Was it simply forgetting and walking into the office with a button on, or a T-shirt underneath your shirt, and not realizing that you're wearing a white shirt, and you could see through your white shirt that you're wearing a BJ Cruz for whatever, T-shirt underneath it? That really is not, is not, and should not be grounds for termination, maybe a suspension or reprimand or something, but not termination. And so, they, it was their suggestion that we amend the law to give the Civil Service Commission the power to be able to determine the punishment, as opposed to just outright termination. And so, I'd like to make an amendment on Line 6, that should read "not more than 30 days," rather than "not less than 30 days." On Page 6, Line 6.
Page 6, Line 6.
A penalty of not less than 30 days, it really should be not more than 30 days. I mean, if it's, if it's a not, not more, yeah. So, I hope, I hope there's no objection to that amendment. And with that amendment, Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to speak on this, you and my colleagues for the opportunity to speak on this bill, ask for your support of this, and hope that we can bring our civil servants into the 21st century along with their federal counterparts. And again, I want to thank the Civil Service Commission for pointing out to me that the Federal Hatch Act does have a separate tier of employees who they prohibit from any kind of activity, because of the gravity and the fact that their work should be above reproach and not be questioned by their political activity. I thank you, Madam.
On the amendment then to delete the word "less" to "more," so it's not "more than 30 days suspension," without any objections, so ordered. On the motion, Senator Blas, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to take the opportunity to applaud the author of the legislation, good Senator Fampiti. I, for want to, have, agree, you know, that, granted, you know, the Mini Hatch Act was, there was intended purpose for it, you know, the problem with a lot of times, a lot of our laws is, we start with the basic, and then we build up, and then all of a sudden we've got this, we made a mountain out of a mole. And over the years, we've decided that, you know, this is the way things should run, because this is the way the law stands. And this is a good way of being able to start to look at how, sometimes, we need to pare down this wall. We need to, you know, we need to remove some of the layers of this onion that we're growing And so I appreciate the effort here, and to be able to define now, as a result of, you know, wanting to recognize, people have to be accountable, people have to be responsible for their actions, and giving people the opportunity, hang on. Giving people the opportunity to be able to participate in this, think of, system that we call democracy. And along those lines, I do have a couple of questions, and I hope the author of the legislation can yield to it, and recognize also, on, I guess, this would be Section 1, but on Page 3, and I recognize, and I see that, you know, some of these agencies that are employees of agencies that are still prohibited to be able to, or still governed under the Mini Hatch Act and its intent.
Mr. Vice Speaker, there is a question for you.
We have a listing of agencies that I am assuming would be responsible, should there be a complaint filed, they'll be responsible for being able to look into these complaints, investigate these complaints, and then prosecute the complaints. And is it the intent? And I just heard the speaker say that the reason for this is all members of the department or these agencies, you know, because, I guess, somehow, directly or indirectly, be involved in the investigation. But I guess my question would be, is there a way, or let's take, for example, Page 3, Line 5, the Guam Police Department? Is it safe to assume that the reason why it's just the Guam Police Department as opposed to all police officers and all law enforcement entities? Reason why that's there is because the Guam Police, it's the Guam Police Department that would do the investigations, should there be one? And not the, say, Port Police or the Airport Police and whatnot?
As I, as I understand it, and I do yield, Madam Speaker, the recommendation from the Civil Service Commission, and if my understanding is correct, is they're the ones that are going to be able to have prosecutors for offenses and have us in jail for substantial time. And if they decide, you know, "I can overlook this offense if you would support my candidate," it's that kind of concern, that the power that they have as opposed to some of the others. I imagine that, and Customs and Quarantine probably should be entered in this, now that you brought it up because of, and so I would be open for suggestions of other agencies or removal of some. Well, I mean, there's power that they have, you know, besides the body search, but I mean, it just is really the things that can and should be done. And that probably is a very good amendment, if you want to include other police departments.
Well, and the reason why I was asking is because, you know, you know, a police officer has a responsibility to enforce all laws of Guam, and that's the code, and that's the ethics, that's the oath that they take. And so whether or not, and I'll look to the Chairman of Public Safety, if the, with regards to, does not a police officer sign, or from another police department, if this matter was brought to their attention, aren't they going to be just as affected as well? I mean, what police officer takes complaint, whether, again, he's a Port Police Officer or Guam Police Officer or whatnot?
I would imagine, because I think, if my reading of the blotter is correct, the Airport Police probably gives out more DUIs than GPD.
So, and maybe this is something that, you know, with regards to, and I see the urgency of, you know, putting this thing together, and maybe it's something I can work with the author on, with regards to really defining who we want to be able to ensure, I mean, to continue to restrict in as far as political activity. Again, I was just based on the assumption that this is probably the primary law enforcement agency that was going to take the complaint, which is why they were there. But along those lines, this is include also the civilian employees.
The recommendation from Civil Service Commission was the entire department, and I would have, they're here, and maybe what I can suggest is, let me take the bill to the side, and the good Majority Leader and I can go speak to the Civil Service Commission.
We're going to take a recess then, brief recess.
Yeah.
Let's let your is back in session and Senator Blas is to have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity for the recess so I can speak to the author as well as the Director of Civil Service. You know, Madam Speaker, with regards to, again, page three, line five of the Guam Police Department and recognizing as far as what the roles and the responsibility of those individuals who may have to initially take the complaint and have the power to be able to take the authority to be able to take a complaint, I'd like to make an amendment to read so that it it's the instead of the Guam Police Department, it reads sworn police officers.
And maybe.
So it's it will say sworn police officers and.
So it so five, delete Guam Police Department and put sworn police officers.
Sworn police officers.
Okay, and the definition, but for everybody.
And definition, there's there is definition within the Guam Code Act as to what a police officer is as opposed to law enforcement or peace officer.
Okay, so long as that's clear. Okay, so on the amendment, hearing objections, order. On the motion, the chair recognizes Senator Esposito.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill and I want to commend the author for for wanting to update our mini head check to reflect what happens on a federal level. I understand completely the rationale of behind permitted activity and also carving out those employees of the government that have a direct fiduciary responsibility, for instance, to elections such as the Guam Election Commission, the Civil Service Commission, of course, because they're going to be reviewing all of these investigations and having to adjudicate it at their level, the Office of Public Auditor, because this office is has to maintain some level of objectivity as well, as well as those in the Attorney General's Office responsible for the criminal investigation and the list and Prosecution Division of the AG and Rev and Tax as well, and the list goes on and on. In section two, Madam Speaker, I want to call to your attention where it has prohibited activity and it says an employee shall not use his official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with or affecting the results of an election. Now, I'm made to understand that the employee in this case is limited to a classified employee. And so in this instance, we're saying that a classified employee shall not use his official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with or affecting the result of election, but yet we're not recognizing other classes of government service such as appointed as well as those in director, deputy director, and private secretary positions and special project coordinators and other unclassified positions throughout this government of Guam. And so why in one instance will you prohibit a classified employee from using his or her official authority to influence an election, but yet you're by not stating it, you're allowing those unclassified employees to do something that the classified employees are not permitted to do? And I I don't think any employee in this government should be using their official authority to influence for the purpose of interfering or affecting the results of an election. And so my amendment, Madam Speaker, is after the word employee, to insert the words in So, we're clear that a director cannot call a general staff meeting and say that in this upcoming election, I want you to vote for the following candidates. I think that's an exercise that should not be done in relation to that person's official authority, and so I offer that as an amendment.
So, the amendment then is on page three, line 18, after the word employee for subsection A, to add the words, "an employee in all classes of government service." On the amendment. Anyone like to speak in amendment? Any objections? I'm giving you. Well, then, I guess that means a recess. Back in session. Understand that the discussion continues with Civil Service Director, so we will recess for lunch and we'll see you this afternoon at 2:00 p.m.